Hey, Carrie.
Oh, are people in meetings?
CDC right there and right there.
Just coming in.
There you go.
Do it. Good.
You're Mr. Mania.
I'm good. How are you?
Okay.
Double check.
Oh, my gosh. I've heard your voice. You've heard Kelly's voice.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We have.
Just not his sweet face.
Right.
Yep. Going to have some things for open.
To be on. Yes, now. You should probably let.
I have two iPhones.
Already have things.
Are you talking about the parking?
Yeah.
That was the question that came up.
I think Greg has.
Chuck, you're still working is what I can't figure.
Fun times.
I'm just waiting around, you know, it's like.
That one right there.
Work.
Okay.
I get lost.
Right. What do they say? I said, I have to pay.
Time we're ready.
When you resign.
All right, we'll bring this city council workshop for July 16th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Heebler.
Here.
Councilmember McClymets.
Present.
And Councilmember Rock.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Rock, would you please stand to receive your oath? We've already sworn in Councilmember Rock in private, but we're going to do it here in public for the public and.
Yeah.
Teachers. So please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Brittany Rock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Have you signed them? Oh, you don't? That's because we already did that. Okay, never mind. We'll get there. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, there's an amendment amended agenda bill and resolution for item G. Everyone has a printed copy of the amended versions at their seats and printed copies were placed on the back table for the public. The website will be updated and the amended version with the amended version tomorrow. We'll move on to review of council minutes. Councilmember Fullerton and Councilmember Heebler.
Not see anything.
I did not see any.
Very good. Excellent job.
Excellent job.
All right, we're going to move on to council open discussion. I have a couple of things and I'll get to you. Number one, I think I feel the need to say something in regards to the assassination attempt on the presidential candidate and former president in regards to just rhetoric and what that means. I think it is incumbent upon all of us to attack ideas and debate ideas, but not villainize people. I think the council would agree with me with that. So that's I just want I felt need to say something in regards to that. The other thing I'll bring up is every Wednesday right now, we just started Toons at Taps. Please, if you get the chance, show up. They've had some great bands. I was there last week. I think Councilmember Heebler was there last week as well. And they did a great job. So, okay, with that, I'll open it up. I think Councilmember Baldwin.
Yes, I would like to bring up the parking issue that is being talked about in the community in regards to Allen York Park. Had a couple of thoughts and wanted to see what the council's thoughts were on it. Before moving forward, though, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that Allen York is the city's largest, most visited park. It is the only free public access right now. And we did this in an attempt to add to help with crowd control on top of other measures as well. However, in hearing some of what residents are saying, it does make sense, some of the requests and wanted I wanted to kind of throw out some ideas and see what your thoughts were, or if you even had some additional thoughts. One of the primary complaints, other than the fact that they feel like they've already paid for the park itself, is the timing of paying for parking. And so, you know, it's roughly $5, roughly $11, $11 all day, roughly $5 for four hours of parking. But I can understand residents that are going in the morning, for example, when there's low attendance, not, you know, hardly anybody in the parking and things like that. And obviously, the reason why we added it in the first place was to help with crowd control and things like that. And so I don't really see why someone would want to pay, I guess, if they were to go fishing really early in the morning or walk their dog early in the morning and then pay basically every day. So if they were to walk their dog every day for five days, I don't think that's very reasonable. Some other suggestions that I've heard that have been made is to potentially give Bonnie Lake residents some kind of way to, I don't even know how this would work. So again, ideas would be really helpful, but in making it so that they can be identifiable somehow as a resident so that they can, I don't even know, get certain amounts of parking throughout, you know, the summer months, well, until October 1st. And so I just wanted to kind of hear what your thoughts were. Some of the suggestions were to wait until the next public safety meeting. I think that is too long. And I think this is something that we need to make decisions on fairly quickly with the city's suggestions as well. And yeah, and so I just wanted to see what your guys' thoughts were on that.
Number one.
I'm sure you've heard about them.
Yes, I think we have. Ms. Robertson, could you tell us again about the, what the issue is if we, even if we were to pass something right now, how long does that take to go through?
I'm trying to. Okay, absolutely, Mayor. So the hours of operation for the parking is in the city code. One concern, if we had different hours, is people might think the park wasn't open if the parking has different hours than the, than the, but that's a policy call. It's in the city code. So the only way to change the hours for the paid parking is to change the city code, which has to be done by ordinance. Bonnie Lake opted to adopt referendum and initiative powers to the people. This is the kind of ordinance that can't take effect for at least 30 days after publication and passage because of the referability to do a referendum on the ordinance. So if you passed something, say, next week, it would not take effect until the end of August, roughly thereabouts, at the soonest. In addition, we'd have to change the signage. I think the signs not counting installation costs were $500. So that would, that would be a cost. So you can certainly do it, but it wouldn't take effect during the heat of, during the height of the summer, which I know is something that would be of a concern to the council.
It's why everybody be aware of that. So let you finish.
Yeah, I just, just to your first point in regards to the free parking and thinking that the, you know, the park would be closed, I would have to disagree with you. Because I feel like in places like Seattle where they offer free parking, I'm not confused as to whether it's closed or not. I just know that there are certain hours where it's free for parking.
And I, Councilmember McClymets, did you have some?
Yeah, so thanks for bringing this topic up, right? I think, I think I would really appreciate it if staff worked with the vendor to find out if there's a way to let residents register, right? Because I don't think it's appropriate to charge residents. I voted against the parking to begin with. So this is not my favorite topic. The other thing I would do is I would say, you know, the council tonight could add a sunset clause to the parking so that it would force us to reevaluate it in like, let's say, a year and to have the parking go away unless we reapprove it after we've seen what happens for a year. We don't do enough sunset clauses on some of our ordinances and I would think that this is a good use of it. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Heebler.
So I'm kind of on the same wavelength as Kelly here because listening and talking with residents, like even last week at Music in the Park, they're all not understanding why we're charging, why they have to pay. They're just kind of in this like, what? I was like, so some of them I talked to, I was like, I wasn't there when this was all decided. I don't know the whole discussion. So my thought would be maybe we can talk about again, you know, later on this year and maybe it works, maybe it doesn't work, maybe there is a way for us to figure out if residents can have a free parking pass where just non-residents are paying to park. I don't know if there's a way with the vendor to, you know, for somebody to go in and register their license plate and say, hey, this is a license plate is associated with a city resident. I mean, they'd have to prove that that's their address or whatever, but I just don't know what else to do, I guess, especially if it takes time to undo something. I don't know what our other options are other than just, you know, being super kind to everybody and making sure they understand that it's, it's a trial run. I like the sunset clause idea because that would be very helpful to have an end date and a reevaluation date.
And I've, I've spoken with Jason about talking to the vendor about trying to figure what can we do kind of thing? As some general questions, like what, what are our options essentially to do that? We don't have answers yet, unless we came up with something really quick.
No, I was just going to say on the, on the parking paths for residents, and I've kind of spoke to CDC about this earlier. One other thing that we have to check is whether or not that would violate anything with our Recreation Conservation Office agreement. For the, for the audience, Allen York Park was purchased with a grant from a state grant back in the 70s. And part of that application was we're building a park for East Pierce County, so we got state funds to build the park. Now, the other side of that argument is that just paid for the land. We pay for the maintenance cost every year. So there should be some sort of offset. I don't know. I'm just saying that's one more thing that we need to look into and have an answer. Because what I wouldn't want to do is pass an ordinance that violates that agreement and then have to go back and have that argument with the state. I just want to make sure that whatever we do is consistent with the wills of the council, consistent with our previous obligations and that we're on good legal footing when we make those decisions. So that's just one more wrinkle as we talk about this resident, non-resident pass and it would also require in order to make that, that change.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that people actually put the app on their phone to pay. And then I don't know if they have to take a picture of their license plate. Haven't attempted to do it yet, but I know that we have the permit parking for the local residents who are having issues with people parking in their lawns and parking in front of their home and vandalizing. So if there would be a possibility, if we can, through the RCO, have it so that we could maybe have people come to the police station and apply for a permit. And then they can just put that in their window so they wouldn't even have to sign up in the app. They would have a permit and then they can just put that in their window of their car. And that way, if police officers are driving by and see that that car hasn't paid, well, then they can see, oh, this one is a Bonnie Lake resident. They have a permit in the window or a sticker or something that can't be duplicated and can't be, you know, given out to, hey, buddy, and I know you're coming into town, so here's, here's a parking permit for Allen York Parks. He can park for free, you know, so just maybe a sticker or something or a code. But it, but the code can be passed around. So unless it's like an individual code per person that applies for that code. So it would be different for each person who applied. And then when they went into the application, they could put in their individual code number and then they would be, you know, avoid being, having to pay. So just something, I don't know, just thoughts.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation on this paid parking. One thing I would ask you, Mr. Sullivan, is if, when you talk to the city about that, if they cannot, the residents cannot get a free pass, if there can be a discounted rate for the residents, because I think that's an option, maybe that we could look at. If there's not an ability to give a free citizen, Bonnie Lake citizen pass, maybe something at a discounted rate or make a seasonal pass or something like that for people that use it on a regular basis. I will say there is another aspect to this. I understand that, you know, charging citizens use a park that they feel they paid their taxes for to, to use again. You know, has been upsetting for a lot of people. I was out with our Bonnie Lake Police Department this weekend over at the park and I will tell you that I know I wasn't a part of the council then, but when you guys talked about it, this was a big public safety was kind of a help to help a public safety issue. Anybody that's at Allen York Park the last few years had probably seen some of the issues that had been there. When we were there this last weekend with other things that have been implemented this year, tons of families enjoying the lake, having a great time. So while I understand the the ability to say, hey, I'm a citizen. I don't, I've paid my taxes. I don't want to have to pay for it again. I also know that there might have to be a slight sacrifice to create a safe environment for families there. So that's a fine line that I think we're trying to figure out. With that being said, I do think that there's tweaks that need to be made to the system, things like sunset clause, revisiting it, figuring out the residential parking. If there's some kind of discount array, we can do it for, for teams and sports, even though they're not as affected as much in the summertime, that's more of a springtime. It might catch them right in May there, but so I just, there is definitely things that we can do to make it better for the residents. But I also think that we have to look at the benefit that we are creating. From my understanding, we were the only, Allen York was the only non-paid parking public park around in the area. That's one of the reasons why we were getting overwhelmed.
I agree. And I can tell you from the last couple of years, we've had a difficult time maintaining public safety down there. I think we were getting the wrong kind of citizens down there, whether I think they were a lot of them outside the city or whatnot. Now you're seeing more families down there, which is good. Use, I think you saw a direct result of the parking issue at the county park over the weekend. I don't know if anybody heard anything about that, but they had to clear the park because they had so many people in there and they were having such issues and people parking everywhere. And if you go by the park now, there's no parking deals all over the place, every four feet. And I think that's a direct result of what we did here because now they're starting to see some of the same problems that we were. So I think in some ways it's working. It's not perfect and we haven't, I think we have a lot of fine tuning yet to do, though. Councilmember Baldwin.
Um, so yeah, I was there and present for all of the discussions and they were all very extensive. And a lot of what was being talked about in our meetings is that many of the disturbance issues were coming from residents outside of the city limits. And so the other issue too, the reason why we had chosen parking as one of many facets to improve the park is that it just makes enforcement easier. There, there was just nothing that we could do to then, you know, cause someone to leave the park unless they were illegally parked in front of somebody's house or something like that, which they also did. I do like the, and also just a side note during city events, parking is, you don't pay for parking during those things, just kind of as a side note. Another thought also is, what do you call that? It with the Discover pass, I like how you had said if there was a potential for a pass, but then people could then duplicate it or, you know, like take it and put it in someone else's vehicle. But I know with the Discover pass, the way that they prevent that is you have to write your license plate number on the particular pass that's in the car and they need to match. And so I just, you know, and then if you don't write your license plate number on there, it's, it's null and you could still be ticketed for not having a Discover pass. So we could maybe do something like that for residents as well. So then you don't have to change the signage like you were talking about. You know, and things like that, at least for this, you know, season with the sunset clause. But I tell you, it was not just something where we were thinking, oh, that we should find a way to like make money for that area. It was very much like, how do we get the riffraff out of the park? And that was one of many ideas. So and a lot of times the people coming from outside of the city are seeing where is the closest next free park? It's Allen York. So.
That's where Davis.
Yeah, I would totally agree with what Councilmember Baldwin was saying there. I just think that there's, I think some people are upset because they think that we're looking at this as a revenue stream and that's not, not the point behind the paid parking. It's not to create revenue for the city. It was to create a safe environment for the park. And so I just feel like that's, that's important to be known. And also in my discussions with some residents that were upset originally about it, then I explained to them also what you mentioned, which I think is important for people to remember is that they're during city events like Toons at Taps, Bonnie Lake Days, that parking is free, residents are able to come and they don't have to worry about coming and parking or paying for parking for those events. I think that's an important message to get out there also.
Councilmember Heebler.
Last week at so used to being called Music in the Park, Toons at Taps. And, you know, residents asked, if you guys go, go stand at the city booth for a little bit because residents love talking to us. They want to hear from us. They want to ask questions. They want that. They want to know who their council members are. So it was actually really cool to be there, but they'd ask like, why are we having to pay? And I was like, well, we've had a lot of riffraff. We've had a lot of issues at Allen York Park during the summer months, during the hot days and things like that. And this was a safety thing. And I know that the council had worked really hard to figure out how to, you know, make it safer. And this was one of the options. And but I, the, and that helped them to understand the reason why. So giving them that explanation, they were just like, okay, I do get it. And they're like, well, but you're making money off this. And I was like, well, actually, all of the funds are going back into your park fund. They're not going to. I've seen comments, people are like, oh, they got some hidden source that they're paying some hidden person, you know, behind the scenes. And I'm like, no, 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 you're not. This is literally going right back into your park fund to help pay for your parks. And so that calmed a lot of people down of like, okay. So they were, they seemed to be more okay with it with that explanation, but I still think some type of pass for city residents would be more helpful, even if we still have to figure out, like if, if, if everybody still wants to charge them a lower rate, something that's like, here, you're a city resident rate. I don't know what the answer really is, but my two cents.
That's where Baldwin.
So I guess my question then is like, what is the next steps? Because I know sometimes we talk about stuff at open council discussion and then it it falls flat.
My thought would be that, I know you don't have another meeting, Public Safety Committee meeting until next month. Right? So that's a while. They call, I would say, call another public safety meeting sooner to get it together. And then hopefully Jason can have some answers on what the actual vendor can do. And then as a public safety committee, we can make a better decision as to what kinds of things we want to, want to change and then bring that back. That would be my thought. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
Yeah.
So you're saying we need to hold another meeting just to talk about what it sounds like people are already in agreement about.
Well, no, I.
Seems like a waste of time.
Well, I think we don't know what the vendor can or cannot do yet.
Yeah. So then why don't I just wait for the discussion for the next meeting? Yeah, I think it should. I just, I don't.
We can do that. Councilmember McClymets.
If this, could this be as simple as just changing the operating hours immediately to be, you know, parking's only from 2:00 PM to dusk? And, you know, because I hear your, your, your question about people just wanting to come walk their dog in the morning, times the park's not used, right? Can, I mean, is it, can we do that very effectively, quickly?
She was saying that the.
Apparently takes 30 days or something.
Well, two, two issues with that, Councilmember McClymets. One is that it has to be done by ordinance because it's in the code. So in the ordinance, because you have adopted referendum powers, this type of ordinance is subject to referendum. So it couldn't take effect until 30 days after passage and publication. So about 35 days after it's passed, it wouldn't be able to take effect. Then we would also have to order and install the new signage. So.
That's only if we change the hours.
Correct.
If that's a way through the vendor for Bonnie Lake residents to be able to have some sort of pass, that's different, right? It doesn't require a referendum and ordinance 30 days.
It would require an ordinance change too, because the code, the code that was adopted says the paid parking at Allen York Park is X. We would have to go into that code and either change paid parking for Bonnie Lake residents is Y, non-residents is X. And it goes back to what the city attorney was saying was that 30-day window.
I guess my question then for staff, how do we get to yes?
Well, and I would just weigh in and then Jason can talk. One of the things I would need to look at is what the, what the vendor agreement says to see if we can make changes. I was trying to find it on my phone when, when someone was asking about that, I couldn't find it. But I mean, we looked at it, you guys approved it or it's so that's, it's done. We need to look at that. We also need to look, Jason, we need to look at the RCO grant. And we could potentially put some options in front of the council. But anything that you do is going to require an ordinance, which will take about 35 days to take effect once passed and a signage change. So.
So what I'm hearing then is vendor agreement, step one, you're going to find out whoever is going to find out more about that. And then you can then potentially bring stuff like options to council. Am I hearing that right?
Sorry, I was listening to two people. Um, I guess you could also repeal the ordinance, but then that would take it out altogether. But I would have to check the contract to see if there's penalties. You'd want to be fully advised as to that.
So I guess that, that's why I would say a meeting, another meeting, although I hate to do other meetings, but I think you kind of have to because we don't have the information in front of us right now. Sorry, Councilmember Heebler.
Just the, the, it was just said that we approved the agreement with the vendor, but I don't remember as a council approving an agreement or signing off on it with the vendor because there was one and then that got changed to a new vendor. So there's a brand new vendor compared to what we were originally going with. And I don't remember since I know that came in after I came into office.
And Chuck is just reminding me that it might have been done administratively under the administrative authority that council granted. So I'm not sure if that came to you, but we did sign an agreement with Park. We, as in the collective, we city did sign an agreement with Park Mobile.
We would have voted to give permission for the staff to sign an agreement with the parking.
Well, there's general.
Specific parking that was in that, in that vote.
There's, I'm not sure. But there is general procedures where certain contracts do not come to council and certain, like smaller contracts do not come to council. Not every contract comes to council. Most contracts do not come to council. Under the title to authority that staff has.
Councilmember Baldwin.
So is it possible to have information by the next council workshop as far as options? And the answers to these questions so that we can then have a full discussion about it? And then make a decision at that time of how we're going to move forward?
I would actually, I the answer is yes, but then I would say we need to be clear on that date. The next council workshop, which would be August 6th, was canceled because of national night out. So then that would mean the next council workshop is the 20th, unless the council wanted to have a special meeting on July 30th in order to have that workshop that was canceled on the 6th. I think to get to the answers of solution that Councilmember Baldwin was asking, I think we have a couple of things that we need to look into. One is what does the RCO grant limit us to or not? It could, it could be nothing. It could just be Jason's, you know, I want to check something before I answer the questions.
Because obviously Field 5 was built long after any kind of RCO grant. So, you know, we know it doesn't apply.
Right. And so we know Field 5 is completely different. So that's what's weird. Field 5, Deputy Mayor Swatman is correct. Field 5 was not part of the RCO grant. So Field 5 is kind of a free for all. We can do what we want there. They don't have a say. It would be the, the two lots around Field 1 and Field 2, the snack shack and the boat trailer parking lot. That was all part of the property that was purchased with the RCO grant. So it's a, it's a little weird. So we just have to flush that out. I just want to make sure we don't trip ourselves when we give you solutions. So we'll. So we'll look into that. That's a couple of phone calls. And two, whether it could be reduced or free, that's once, that's, that's one question. Implementation becomes the second question. Whether it's through something that we do with Park Mobile or it's something that we do with a pass that gets mounted in your car. And then we would just want to make sure that we talk with our police department to make sure that that, the way we're doing that is enforceable. So that we're not creating problems for, for the, the police department. As part of that conversation, I think the hours question is easier. That's just the amendment to the ordinance and a timing thing. I would just want.
Changing of signage technically, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
There's an implement, but I think that the, since it applies to everybody universally.
Yeah, with the RCO grant.
Yeah, that doesn't become a question. But the question I would have the council as we begin to do this research is, are you thinking Monday through Wednesday? Monday through Sunday, you know, what time to what time? Because on a hot day, the park really does start hopping by about noon.
A lot before then, yeah, before then.
From what I'm seeing in the shift briefs, it's pretty much full by 10.
Right. Which is very different than on a Monday. So, you know, one question that we would, in the council, that I don't think needs to answer tonight, because we can write that, believe that blank in the ordinance, is what those hours look like. And you're going to want to manage that based on what we're seeing for when those hours peak. Cause Saturday and Sunday is very different than a Monday.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I feel like those suggestions, first of all, thank you. I can see that you understand our vision. So thank you. I think we are not the experts as far as when peak times are, when people aren't there, when they are there. And so I, it would be easier, I think, if we were given, you know, those things. So we can be aware of what that is and then make a decision from there instead of us trying to figure that out.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah. So I have a question for Assistant Chief of Police Boyle. I don't know if you can answer this or not, but have you seen a down tick in like riffraff? Or, you know, has, has, has the parking, paid parking helped as far as the police department goes and callouts and safety?
This last weekend, still going, this last weekend was fairly busy, but it was, it, it does seem as though that there has been a little impact from the paid parking. As Jason was saying, you know, the families are now returning to the park where some of the riffraff seems to be moving on. As you know, last weekend, we had that big impact over at Pierce County. And I'm not saying because of what we're doing here specifically has pushed a lot of people over there. But it seems as though in my view, that since we've now done this, that has kind of pushed people in that way. They had almost 5,000 people there in that park.
Wow.
And it was total.
Well, wow.
We're lucky we dodged that one. So I think some of what we can say is that this has made an impact if we're using the facts of what we know. So that's my stance on it at this point. I know the chief's on here. He may have a few other things to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Um, I was just thinking about when we're talking about hours of operation or hours for the paid parking. Is there a way to match that up with our security that we have there? So when the security is there, that's typically when the park's getting busy, right? We've already done that research to say we want security here at this time. So whenever, whatever the contracted hours are for the security, that's when the same hours we have for the paid parking. I just was thinking that that might, because since that's typically what we've said is when it's busy, that's when we want our security. And that's when we're going to want our parking to be paid to keep that under control. And then my second thing that I wanted to say quickly, Mr. Solomos for you on the RWO. If they do come back and say that we can't use, we can't make a residential discount or make it free. Could we turn Ball Field Five into a residential parking? The sense that's not subject to the RWO.
RCO.
RCO, excuse me, RCO, I'm still working. RCO, could we, could we do something like that if they do come back and say that?
Well.
Does that, that, that makes sense or?
Yeah. And, and I want to say, I, I think so. We did get a small RCO grant to help build that field. So I just would want to double check both of those to make sure we're not running afoul of either one of those. It was a, it was a very small, it was like three, yeah, $450,000 out of the multimillion dollar project. So I don't know what the strings were. So those are all the things I'm going to reach out to RCO and, and, and verify.
Councilmember Hubler writing down RCO.
One of the things that I noticed driving through there this last weekend, Officer Boyle, Assistant Chief Boyle, is the amount of people, I don't know where city line is, but go back, go past Allen York, one block and then two blocks, and those roads are packed full of cars. Everybody's parking down there. So they don't have to pay and they are walking down. I don't know if that is city right of way, or if that's county or where that sits. But that was an absolute nightmare, the amount of people parked on both sides. And there's not enough room for cars barely to like drive through there. So I'm, that's something you guys can watch? Or if that's even something where parking, you know, I know the parking permits were for behind Allen York Parks. I don't know if it's city limits, if we can do something like that again down there, because it was a disaster.
We've had a couple of complaints in regards to that. And, and more asking to, hey, we would also like to be included in that parking area type deal. Now it's down. I saw Chief Barry apparently had his hand up, but I don't know if. Yeah.
He's still here. His arm.
Do you have something to say there, Chief?
Yeah. Good evening. Sorry, I can't be there tonight. I do want to say that we have been working on those other parking issues. We've been impounding vehicles. We do get to a point where it just simply tapped out. There are more vehicles than we have officers available to. You can imagine that when it's 90 degrees, not only is the beach busy, but the rest of the city is busy. So it really does tap our resources. Part of our security plan is to have that security in place before it gets busy. Because once you have a problem and once you're overrun, it's hard to get control back. So that is why we do have our security out there pretty early at 10:00 AM and run till the park closes. But we're willing to work with you whatever. I heard Councilmember Baldwin say, how do we find the yes? And I think one thing to think about too, going down ranges, how do we identify what a citizen is? Is it based off utility bills? Are they paying a utility bill? Or are they paying, you know, they registered? Cause a lot of our folks that live in apartments, they're not going to be registered to a Bonnie Lake address. So it is really a bit of a heavy lift to figure out, how do we classify someone as a resident? And then how do we issue up to 10,000 permits? That's going to be a bit of a challenge, but we can definitely look at it for you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Councilmember McLehman's.
So, you know, it's going to take 30 days to do something. But 30 days from the middle of July is till August and then there's September and October. So action is still probably reasonable, right? Simple action, at least a sunset clause to show people that we're, we have ears and we care and we're doing something. Either that, or we can just declare Bonnie Lake a parking sanctuary city. We don't have to enforce our own laws.
Other discussion. Councilmember Baldwin.
Just one last thought. I, I don't, I don't think we should do nothing. That's what I'll say. I don't think we should do nothing. I think we should do something. And so it's just, what is the something?
Well, can we put it on discussion for next week's council meeting? Put it on full discussion and then hopefully we'll have some phone calls made and some answers on legalities as well as the RCO and and the, the contract.
The only one I have concerns about is RCO, because it is Tuesday night. Trying to get an answer out of them in three days might be tough. I'm not saying it's not doable. I'm saying I'm not going to attempt.
Yeah.
Just putting that out as a footnote, we will try, but I don't know if we'll be successful. Just given that we have, you know, three working days left in this week.
Is there a way to go back through the, the grant and kind of see what is actually in that?
We can read the grant.
Regional versus city.
Yeah, we can read the grant and, you know, I, I will safely bet, it probably doesn't specifically say, this is what you can and can't do with parking. It is their interpretation of maintaining the park in perpetuity, open to the public. And what does that mean? You know, there were, there were things that we did that we thought were within the grant and we did things. And then come to find out they weren't and we're having to unwind those circles now. So I don't know if, I don't, I, I can be safe to say that there's nothing in it that will specifically address this question. It's going to be their interpretation of what is open to the public in perpetuity mean.
Councilmember Hubler.
I guess, listening to all this, you know, like this land was actually purchased and largely with an RCO grant. And it was meant to be a East Pierce County Park. Is that what it was meant to be?
When you, when you see the grant application, it kind of draws, it shows the capture area for this park going down into Buckley and Puyallup and Ordine. As part of the justification that the city submitted in the 1970s is why the state should give us the money.
So I guess my thought would be then we should make sure the residents of Bonnie Lake know that this, actually the land was purchased and started with that RCO grant in that meaning. Like that's what it was meant to be is a county park, not just a city resident park. Maybe we explain that and let them know that, hey, this is how it was purchased. This is the, you know, benefit for the entirety of the area, not just the residents of Bonnie Lake. And yes, we as residents help pay for maintenance and upkeep. But also I guess to think about our park funds come from when a house is built or an apartment built or something like that, right?
It comes from a variety of sources. So you get park impact fees from when new development is created to pay for new improvements, to fund, to support that new demand. Also a portion of the real estate excise tax, which is when any property sells, whether it's commercial or residential, goes to the park for capital expenses. For maintenance, that is basically, I know Sherry's on the line. So Sherry, jump in if I'm completely wrong. But most of the park maintenance comes directly from that general fund budget for property taxes and sales taxes. Am I, am I saying that correctly, Sherry?
It comes from the park fund from REIT, yes. So the real estate excise tax, when you sell a house, that money goes towards the park fund, which is what has built Allen York Park, as well as general fund dollars.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I think just for correction of just discussion and conversation, it wasn't largely purchased with the RCO grant. It's like a, it's like thousands compared to the million dollar project, millions of dollar project, correct?
He's talking about the original one.
The original. Okay.
Yeah, I was talking about the RCO for Phil Five. Yeah, you are correct. For Phil Five, we got.
350,000 dollars.
Yeah, we got a little bit and then we paid a whole lot. But the purchase, I think that was mainly state funds for the purchase, but that doesn't include Field Five. So we've just got some weirdness that we have to unwind, not impossible.
Okay. Then next week, is it possible just to have an update with a touch point on the agenda, just to keep it in front of us, whether you have information or not yet?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yeah. Well, I'll defer to the city administrator. I can do my part, but.
Is that possible?
Thank you. Noted. Yes.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Okay, just a quick question for Sherry. Is there any specific bill that our residents pay like on utilities or sewer or electricity power? Is there anything that specifically says money goes to the park fund? Is, if it, is there a sales tax that goes towards the park fund?
Fund revenues.
No, like Jason was saying, the park fund is supported by park impact fees as well as REIT. So REIT is generated when a house sells and park impact fees are generated when there's something being built.
Right. Okay. So there's no specific bill that says, oh, this little tiny portion here is going to go towards parks. Okay.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, just one more thing I wanted to kind of go along with what Councilmember Baldwin said, that I think we should be trying to think of some action to do. So at next week's, next week's meeting, possibly looking at the ordinance to change the time limitations. That could be, that seems like the simplest thing that we can do right now is to adjust the times. So I think that's something maybe that should be brought forward at next week's meeting to maybe get that 30 days clock, 35 day clock ticking to maybe get that into effect before, you know, by the middle of, middle to end of August there. At least we'd have a month of change time before the paid parking was off for the season.
Interesting. See the ordinance, right? Cause I would suspect that you could put, you know, paid parking hours right below the sign. And I don't know, you have to read the ordinance to see what's in it, right? You'd think you could do that like.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think is to have some action to show, yeah, we, I mean, we are taking this very seriously. We want to, we want to get something going here. And I think that's probably the, the quickest thing that we could change to, for the people that are using the park at seven o'clock in the morning, right? That they, to walk their dog or go for a run or to do something to show like, yeah, yeah, we hear you. This is not probably acceptable for you. You have to pay $4 to go walk your dog every day. So that's something that I think. Yeah, $4.38 or whatever the fee is that goes along with that. I think that's something that we'll definitely look at making an adjustment on quickly while we're trying to continue to mold this program to fit. So.
Yeah, I think there's tweaking going on. Yeah.
We'll get much more city staff input to the council next week, right?
Yep.
Do a little mini update.
Yeah, they're already hardworking. They're working right now. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, great. Good conversation. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other open discussion? Councilmember Fullerton.
So I know I'm going to be presenting this to the finance committee soon, but I have been working diligently on our mayor vacancy. And I added a portion, like an A to the 2.04.510A. So this is just like kind of changes that could possibly happen to our city code for a vacant mayor position. So I put it under the deputy mayor, under Article Eight. And so what my wording is, is when mayor's, mayor's position becomes vacant during their term in office, the deputy mayor shall become mayor pro temp, not to exceed 90 days. Then the vacated position of mayor shall be filled within 90 days. When a councilperson holding a, holding the position of deputy mayor therein, holds position of mayor pro temp, he, she shall retain all council manic rights to vote. The deputy mayor, as provided in RCW 35A dot 12 dot 050 and RCW 42 dot 12 dot 070, may be nominated and elected to position of mayor to finish the term of the vacated office of mayor. Also, RCW 42 dot 12 stipulates that incumbent council members are eligible to be nominated and elected to vacant position of mayor. All council members have the right to nominate themselves or other incumbent council members and to vote for themselves or other incumbent council members for the position of mayor. This includes the mayor pro temp and other incumbent council members. No second is required for the nomination of the mayor. Further, it's in the best interest of the city to move quickly to fill the vacant position of mayor. RCW's 42 dot 12 dot 070 and 35A dot 12 dot 050 are silent to any person other than current incumbent city of Bonnie Lake council members to be eligible to fill the vacant position of mayor. Therefore, electing a current incumbent city council member to the mayor will be the least disruptive and allow council to. to the mayor will be the least disruptive and allow council to continue with important city business. So I do have copies of this. This is not, obviously I can't make policy. I can't set anything in stone. So this is like kind of a rough draft and this will be presented to finance committee as well. If anybody wants copies of this, I have a couple of copies of.
Could you email it?
Yeah, I can email it. So it's the fact that RCW 35A dot 12 dot 050 is basically on the vacancy of mayor only. And so it specifically does not talk about taking people from off the street or doing interviews. Where they talk about doing interviews is when we're replacing a council member. But what it stipulates is that the vacancy of mayor can, let's see, vacancy of mayor or in the council shall be filled as provided in 4212, which is also here, just that one stipulates what a vacancy is. And then a vacancy in the office of mayor or in, oh, let's see, I just read that one. An incumbent council member is eligible to be appointed to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor. So, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, going and talking to your best friend that you, you know, you know, is a great business owner. So I think that you would definitely qualify to be the mayor. And also using the background of the interviews that we did, we interviewed what, six or six people? And the only person that was actually nominated was the deputy mayor. So that speaks volumes to me that the people that applied. I read online some of the comments saying that we wasted their time. And to me, the mayor needs to be an an elected person. It states that an elected person is eligible, an incumbent, which means they've already been elected. And the part of the deputy mayor's duties, which is what I put this under, is to take over the mayor's position should that position become vacant or if the mayor is out of town and can't fulfill his duties, you know, during a meeting, then the deputy mayor takes over that spot. But still retains their ability to vote. So there was a lot of comments about the fact that mayor pro temp was able to vote for himself. Technically, you should not have had to vote because since there was nobody else nominated, then we didn't even have to vote. And that's in, in this as well. So I just, I don't see anywhere where it says, you know, go out and find somebody who you think is qualified. You know, people are qualified to be mayor, however, they don't understand the workings of the city. Mayor Carter, deputy mayor Carter at the time already knew what the position was doing because he was already fulfilling those duties. He was already working with staff. He, he already understood the budget. We've been doing this for six years, right? So it only made sense that when we're in the middle of a budget and we need to proceed and we need to move forward with city business and get on for the people and do our job that we're elected for, that we should put an elected person in there. That's what the, to me, this is what the RCWs are saying, is that an incumbent is the most eligible and the most common sense person to take over that seat. So why do we even have a deputy mayor that's supposed to take over the mayor position and become mayor pro temp if we're not going to at least put that person in position? Or if somebody else wants to, then you can, you can definitely nominate yourself. It's, it's in the regulation. You know, it's written here in the code or the policy that if you are an incumbent council member and you want to nominate yourself, then you can, and then we'll have a debate. We'll allow each council member or, and the deputy mayor, if they want and they accept the nomination, then they can give their reasons why they feel that they're qualified and why they want to be the, the mayor. And then the council can vote and it will be a majority. But if there's only one person nominated, then there is no need for a vote and you don't need a second because that's actually stated in the, in the RCWs. So this was based off of city policy. This is based off of RCWs. And as far as the deputy mayor duties as well as the mayor pro temp duties. So I have been going through things with a fine tooth comb. I don't feel like this is a bias. This, this doesn't have anything to do with why I wanted to nominate mayor, deputy mayor Carter at the time. This has everything to do with the fact that I'm trying to go through the RCWs. I'm trying to understand what the laws say and when the law doesn't speak to something, that doesn't mean you add to it. So if it doesn't speak to it, then it's not there for a reason. Therefore, you know, to say, oh yeah, we're gonna, it, it is in there for city council because you have to go out to the street. You have to have people apply. But here specifically, it says that incumbent council members are eligible, but it doesn't say that, you know, go out and find somebody else. Now, we will have to have a stipulation that if no council member wants to be the mayor and the deputy mayor doesn't choose to take the spot of mayor, then if we're in that kind of a confusing situation, we're going to have to maybe add to that. But anyway, so if anybody wants copies of this, I can email it to you or I can hand it to you. I've got some copies here. And this is just my work. This is not me saying that, that this is how it needs to be. I only have two of these RCWs, but these, these RCWs, you can actually look those up online. There, you can just type in the RCW under Google and it will come right up for you. But anyway, that's just my thoughts and just kind of the work that I've been working on and I just wanted to get that out there. So council knows since it was brought up at a workshop that I have been working on that and I do plan on having meetings with deputy mayor Swatman as well as the finance committee. And does anybody have any questions?
Councilmember Baldwin.
I just have some comments. First of all, thank you for taking the time to write through that and everything. I did feel like a lot of it is similar to kind of the way things are working currently. I think your main thing is that you don't want outside people coming in and interviewing. I, I do think something to consider as a council, I did like the process. The way that we did it for mayor, I felt like we were able to use more discretion and it didn't limit our options and it made it very clear that deputy mayor was, was to be the mayor. It just, it made it very clear. Not only that, but I, I think us as a council, as an elected body should be able to make a sound decision, whether it's a council member coming up into the mayor position or a person that comes to interview. Because in this case, like you, you were very qualified, right? But there could be a deputy mayor in a position that we may not actually want to become the mayor. And then now we can't make a decision as a council and now our, our hands are tied and we're limited. And that's what I liked about this process a lot more is that we were able to have a little bit more autonomy as each council member to make a decision. I think the other part to consider as well is that, yes, we are an elected body. You are elected, you're elected, right? We're an elected body. But the office of mayor is very different from legislative decisions. You can have a council member that makes amazing legislative policy, but they're a terrible executive. And you can have it vice versa. Where you might have a really great person to be mayor, but they're terrible at making laws for the city. So something to think about, obviously, like Terry Carter can encompass both, but that's not always the case. And so I think it's something to consider that you don't know who's going to be sitting in that chair. And we don't want to create policy that will limit the council. So just a thought, and I know we can even change policy at the time of, even if we wanted to, but just a thought to consider as well, but I really appreciate you writing this out.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so my point is that then if you don't have confidence in one of the council members in being in the administrative, then like deputy mayor Swatman, he's technically, he's kind of both. He's in administrative and he's in legislative. Because being deputy mayor, you have to do admin sometimes, you know? And if Mayor Carter steps down, then you're going to be mayor pro temp, which is admin. So we have to, as a council, consider whenever we are nominating the mayor or deputy mayor, who is that person qualified? Do they want it? We have to make sure that when we nominate somebody, they actually accept the nomination, which means they're accepting the responsibility of becoming the deputy mayor. So just, and I feel like when we nominated deputy mayor Carter, I know that I took full accountability or thought process that someday, yeah, possibly he is going to end up being in the mayor's seat. And there are going to be times when he's going to have to take over for the mayor. Now, a vacancy in the mayor position never crossed my mind. However, I didn't nominate him because I felt that he wasn't qualified. I nominated him to be deputy mayor because I knew that he was qualified and he has been on the count, had been on the council for at least four years at the time. And he definitely accepted the nomination and was very interested in the position and he went full bore with that. So I, I didn't nominate somebody that I didn't think was able to do admin. Or was able to, not able to fulfill the duties as deputy mayor. I take that fully into consideration when those nominations are made every two years. We change deputy mayor every two years. So when you're, when you're nominating the deputy mayor in two years from now, that is something that we need to consider as a council. Is this somebody that, that we would accept to take over the mayor position? You know, somebody who would be mayor pro temp at some point. So that, that just means that we as a council maybe need to consider and if, if it wasn't thought of as, you know, much of a responsibility, then when we're nominating, we need to make sure that we're fully on board with that person and with their qualifications. And when they accept that nomination, are they willing to take over the mayor position should that happen? Because much like the vice president, you know, should the president become incapacitated at any point or they pull the 25th amendment on the, the president, then the vice president is taking over that president's spot. And to me, when I nominated deputy mayor Carter at the time, that was my full expectation that he was like a vice president because we are much like a mini little government here. And I took that very seriously when I made that nomination. So just, you know, consider when we're making nominations for deputy mayor, that you take those nominations seriously and you do some soul searching and figure out before you vote and even start thinking about it now for two years from now. Who do, or a year and a half, who do I think is going to be the best deputy mayor then? Because that person very well might end up being mayor someday. Hopefully for not, but.
Thank you. Councilmember McLeish.
So changing the discussion over, I just want to point out that today is kind of a unique day in Bunny Lake history where we have a majority of women on the city councils, right? I think it's amazing and it's a good point. I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
I love serving with men and women.
Any other discussion? We'll move on to our next deal then here. Madam Clark, here's the first one.
This is a discussion item only for AB 2459, Resolution R 2459, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing a three-year extension of the WSU Forest Development Agreement.
So good evening, city council members and mayor. For the record, Jason Sullivan, interim public services director. The item before you tonight is a discussion around a proposed amendment regarding a three-year extension to the current development agreement related to the WSU Forest or Midtown Properties project. The amendment would change no terms of the agreement. It would simply just extend the deadline of the agreement. So for a little bit of background, in 2009, the city signed a development agreement, which is basically a contract between the property owner and it's, it's a contract that is binding on both parties and it is tied to the land, not necessarily just the property owner who owned the property. So it's recorded on title. So whoever purchases is also obligated to follow that contract as well as the city. And so in 2023, or before that, sometime in 2022, 2021, Terragon purchased the residential component from a warehouse or in WSU. The commercial component, if I can move my cursor, or the residential component is kind of the area over here where I'm circling my cursor behind Safeway. This is kind of our midtown park area. And then this is the commercial development that contains the Costco, crumble cookie, Bon Pizza, you can kind of get all of your food habits out of the way over there. I love going over there. You can see back in 2009 when we approved it was a complete demonstration for us that WSU was closing down. So Terragon purchased that residential component. There's been lots of going back between the city and Terragon over kind of the meaning of that agreement.
So Jason, just for clarification though, isn't that actually Midtown Properties LLC purchased it?
You are correct. Midtown Properties LLC purchased this, which is a subsidy, a subsidiary of.
Well, they're a separate entity, a separate legal corporation.
Correct. You are absolutely correct.
Okay, I wanted to, thank you.
And then in 2023, we did receive an application from Midtown Properties to do a, do a development agreement amendment application. That process has been kind of off and on as we worked through a number of, of challenges with that application. In May of 2023, the council did pass Resolution 3155, directing staff to negotiate the requested development agreement. The current development agreement expires in December of this year. So part of what we're looking for tonight is just some guidance and hopefully trying to get some additional time that'll allow us to do some good work and bring back forth all those amendments and conversations with, with the city council. So kind of here's the original project. It's kind of envisioned and embodied in the development agreement. You'll see kind of on the east end of, or sorry, the west end of the project was the commercial medical center that was envisioned, that was built with the connector road. In the mid part, in the mid area was kind of a city park that was kind of envisioned. And then on the inside, on the very end, what we call the residential area was kind of the single family, multi-housing development. And that's really where some of that discussion and debate has, has really arisen regarding how many number of units. Can it be all high density? And that's really where a lot of the debate has been focused. Since the original development agreement amendment has come in and those discussions have started, there's also been some changes with kind of how we're envisioning where we're planning for future growth in the city. So I just bring this up because this kind of, it starts to inform kind of why we're also requesting additional time. Earlier this year, we brought forward our growth targets in order to demonstrate how we're meeting our requirements under the Growth Management Act and also our countywide planning policies and multi-county planning policies related to providing housing capacity for both total capacity. And remember this year was the year that the legislature, a couple of years ago passed. passed a state law that required us to provide capacity for different income bands. And we had to show that we had capacity for those different income bands. One of the things that they put in that legislation or in the guidance that implements that legislation is that high-density residential housing is considered a housing type that is affordable to those making less than 80% AMI. So as we have capacity for high-density residential, we are meeting those capacity targets. So under the growth alternative that was selected by the city council by motion, the council elected to keep going forward regardless of the development agreement. The property that is for the Midtown, Midtown Properties property kept it zoned high-density residential. So regardless of the development agreement, it's going to stay high-density residential as we bring forward the comprehensive plan and the zoning. It's not proposed to be changed to anything. The reason that we were, did that was the council was wanting to find ways to kind of, kind of keep the residential zoning the way it was in the city and kind of concentrate our growth in our core centers consistent with the regional growth strategy. So just wanted to bring that up, that that's kind of partly changing the scope that we're looking at, given that decision earlier this year as a way of implementing our growth targets. So Midtown Properties has been kind of playing with a concept to work. This is by no ways the final design. This is no way the, what we're going to bring back as part of the amendment. This is just people in a room trying to figure out how this would work and could it work? So what they're proposing is kind of morphing around a little bit of the Midtown Park property to kind of massage the shape a little bit. You will see two kind of nodes that are labeled attainable housing. One of the things that we are required to do is to demonstrate we have capacity for housing that's below 50% AMI. And so the thought was those would be areas that would be dedicated and deeded to the city that could at some day, when everything gets developed and all the infrastructure is in place, we could look for a developer to provide that housing type. That keeps that capacity on the table and meets our obligations under the state law to provide that housing capacity, but also provides the city kind of more control over that development type when it comes to the city because the city would be the property owner. And your, your negotiations with someone building that is very different because you're not sitting in a regulatory capacity, you're sitting in a property owner capacity selling property. And then you would have the Terragon development that would be built out as a, as a high-density. Approving the development agreement extension that we're requesting changes nothing in the development agreement. So I, I'm going to take what I always refer to as the McLean's question. What if we do nothing? And so the two options are if we approve the development agreement extension, it gives us three years to negotiate a project where council is involved in the ultimate outcome of that project. It, for the next three years, it would be capped at 672 units. It would have to have all of the requirements in the current DA when it talks about myths, housing and unit type. If we don't approve the extension and the development agreement simply expires, the property owner could proceed with a high-density residential development just under the minimum code requirements that are in our municipal code. So while yes, it's extending the current development agreement to give us more time to work, it's also creating a process by which the council is involved in the development of the project from the beginning. So those concerns that the city council has, the current staff has, the desires of the developer will all be brought to council and those negotiations and that final decision would be, would be with the city council so that we can have a project that is, I guess, more guided versus just our minimum code requirements. So option A, as we do the development agreement, we try to find a way to, to strike a deal that is a win-win for everybody, you know, a win for the community, a win for the city, a win for the developer. Or we let it expire and then we just use our minimum code requirements for a project that would be outright permitted under a minimum code requirements in order to meet other requirements. I can answer any questions, but all we're seeking right now is whether or not there's an agreement to move forward with this and we would just bring back a simple resolution to extend the date.
Councilmember Hubler.
It is Midtown Properties LLC and Terragon wanting to extend the agreement.
Yes, they are wanting to extend the agreement for three years to provide us time to, to have those conversations.
And I can tell you, having myself and I, Councilmember Roach, were meeting with them on kind of an ongoing basis. And some of this has kind of come out of, of that and those discussions. And that's why we're kind of back here like, hey, we're having good discussions and we need more time to actually flush something out that's going to work for both of us. Councilmember McLean.
Yeah, so thanks, Jason. So seems like good news. I have a lot of questions. First question is, can we discuss past litigation here without an issue?
It's public information.
We can certainly discuss that there has been litigation. If you want to talk about the legal risks or have legal input on that, I would suggest we take an executive session break, but certainly there was a lawsuit. Do you want me to, do you want me to just say?
Please, can you summarize the lawsuit?
And Jason might be in a better position than I was, but there was a lawsuit on how we implemented the development agreement that was taken to Superior Court. The developer won at the Superior Court level. It had to do with the density. They wanted a lot more density than we thought the development agreement provided. The city appealed that to the Court of Appeals and the city won at the Court of Appeals decisively and completely. So where the Court of Appeals agreed with the city's interpretation of the development agreement. So that is over. That was not appealed. So all the litigation is finished now.
Thank you. So I, I asked that question for a reason so that you would have history, especially our new council members. So that Terragon wanted to build how many houses, Jason?
They, the original agreement that came in, I want to say was around 1,100, 1,150, where our interpretation of the, in development agreement for a number of reasons was 672 under the development agreement. The, the zoning code in and of itself without the development agreement would have allowed up to 20 units per net acre, which would have pushed it up to that limit. So it was a disagreement on whether or not which controlled the development agreement or the, or the zoning code.
Thank you. So to be clear, I, I believe Bunny Lake is a bedroom community, right? I've lived here for 20 years. I've commuted to South Seattle for 20 years so that my kids could grow up here. Now my grandkids can grow up here. I see high-density housing as a threat to our environment up here because it brings a lot of extra requirements. It burdens the schools, burdens the police department. There's a place for high-density housing. We don't have a train. We don't have an effective public transportation system. That Bunny Lake does not make sense, right? I mean, if the state wants to pony up a bunch of money and bring rail up here or Pierce County will actually bring a bus to the other end of the city instead of stopping at the, the east and the west end of the city, it might, I might be able to be swayed otherwise. Otherwise, I look around and clearly, if you look at the map, we're mostly houses and then businesses. And we very clearly have an excellent plan, thank you, Jason, that the businesses are being built along the main corridor and the residential areas are, are off to the side. So I like, I love Bunny Lake. It's awesome. 1,100 houses, big, it's a big deal, right? That's a lot. The development agreement was obviously not 1,100. We challenged it. We won. I, I think it's good. I would really be afraid of letting a company come in, build 1,100 houses and then the city will be impacted, right? And I, I'm not casting shade on people living in apartments. I lived in an apartment for 20 years, so I get it. But you know, it's, it's, I'm just not for high-density. If we don't continue this, then we're most definitely probably get high-density. So I think it's fabulous. I want to congratulate you on getting Terragon back to the table, willing to extend the development agreement. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
When I met with Dennis Donatara on, he did show kind of what their presentation is, what they're hoping for. And I think it wasn't just apartments. I thought there was like townhouses, other things within that. I have it all at home. He sent me home with the whole presentation, like what he's, what he's looking at and, you know, what they're offering in addition to adding in additional housing, park impact fees that they originally didn't have. If I remember correctly, in the agreement that is currently in standing. And so like, there could be a balance, maybe we could find with them. And I think that's where bringing this back in is, is a great opportunity for us to find that balance with them of what makes it beneficial for them to do this. I know, looking at my own adult children, how hard it is to find a place to live in Bunny Lake. It took us literally six months to find my daughter an apartment here in Bunny Lake. And it was literally just calling and calling and calling constantly to find somewhere that, like, we had to be the first ones. And because if, if you're not the first one, somebody else has got it before you. So having that opportunity for those younger people that can't afford to buy a house yet, to have somewhere to live, we just need to be able to find that balance of what, what works for us and works for Terragon to be able to, or Midtown Properties LLC.
Separate entity.
Yeah, but Terragon is the one that.
There, there's a very good reason that it's called Midtown LLC.
Right. Midtown Properties owns the property.
They're the ones doing the development.
Developer.
Well.
They, yeah, just finding that balance of what's, what's the, what we need, what they're willing to offer. You know, just kind of.
They know what they, the product already is. Sorry.
Councilor.
Yeah, I think the issue though, with the agreement and some of what we were having a hard time with is even within the 600 properties or the 600 units they were going to build, whatever for density, were, was going to be mixed housing just in that. And a lot of it was also going to be flats, which really, let's use the right word, it's apartments, flats are apartments. And some of the biggest issues that we have in the city come from apartment complexes as far as public safety is concerned. And so we were weighing those two things and saying, do we really want to add, you know, a huge apartment complex in this area? And so that was, that was what we kept. So I'm really glad that we won, by the way. I didn't even know that. And then you just said it and wow, that's fantastic.
Hard fought battle.
Mr. Sullivan.
A little worried there.
I, I just want to make sure I'm framing out the, the alternative. So if, if the development agreement is not extended and it does expire at the end of the year, the underlying zoning is R3 high-density residential, which allows for 20 units per net acre, which would allow for the thousand-plus-ish units. So that's basically what our zoning code would allow without the development agreement. So extending the development agreement allows us to negotiate that project into a project that has.
Mixed.
A mix or it, or at least it addresses the concerns in a constructive way and allows it to be more of a negotiated project versus just, here is the minimum code requirements and you meet the minimum requirements and I issue the permits. And so that's a, the distinction, I just want to make sure people understand. If you don't extend a development agreement, it's not that it goes back to some lower density. It just stays at that higher density with the minimum code requirements.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Right. So let me get this straight. I'm developing a large piece of property and currently I'm limited to apparently 672 units or what have you on that piece of property. And I have to pay X fees or whatever associated with that. So if this agreement expires, I can build a whole lot more units in that same space. So my business plan is to come to you and ask you to extend that limitation to 672 units. What, I'm, I'm missing something there.
And so we're, we're not saying we're extending the agreement as it's written so that we can work on a negotiation. I can't tell you what the final product's going to be back when we bring it back to council.
Right.
There are, in, there are things in the development agreement outside of the unit limitation that is beneficial to the developer in such a way that they want to hold on to those terms of the development agreement. And so I'm not in Dennis and Graham's head to tell you every which one of those things that they find important in the development agreement, but there's enough in the development agreement that they find beneficial.
Oh, well, you know, the bottom line is they cannot build what in an R3 environment in Bunny Lake. They can't build in a naked R3 environment, so they have to have a, a development agreement. You know, because that's my opinion and it's pretty well, you could figure out the finances. It wouldn't be too hard to back it out of there because it's cost them too much money to put an R3 on the ground in the current environment that we have. So they have to have a development agreement. Otherwise they're sunk, you know? They created Midtown LLC, so if it didn't go good, they could just say, okay, we're done. See you. Bye. Standard corporate stuff, you know? So they are the proverbial, you know, scorpion on top of the frog. There, there's no, no getting around that. They're not, I don't know who's had the bad, the tour. Did you have the tour too? I think you had the tour. And who are their, their properties? You know, there's no mystery to what they want to build. It's a great-looking complex. They've invited all of us out there at one point in time or not. Did you go out there?
I did not.
So 176 and Canyon.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's fine, you know, take your, go out there.
I didn't have to go on a tour because I know what 76.
And that's what they want to put in Bunny Lake. And that's, that's what they get to put down there. So, but Jason, I think the other, of course, the, the nuclear option is to rezone the property, obviously.
If you were to do that though, you would throw our entire comprehensive plan update.
Right.
In jeopardy because we wouldn't meet our capacity targets and we would have to start finding other properties to upzone.
Right.
To make up that capacity loss. So that's what, that was one change of environment on our side is that in order to meet our requirements under the Growth Management Act and in order to meet our requirements under the multi-county planning policies, which we need to do to continue to apply for grants and loans because you have to have a certified comprehensive plan, we needed this to stay high-density residential to make everything else the council wanted to do throughout the entire city work. So that's, that's one of the changing environments on our side.
Yeah. Is that three? Because it looks like from 2000, what's the date on the memo there? It looks like you go from one to the other. It says, it looks like four years, 2000.
Yeah, there's the typo.
Is that the typo?
Left the years off.
They, extra year.
If you go to the first paragraph and.
Oh, did I make a typo?
Or it says three dash, and it should be three dash years.
Well, because from '23 to '27, isn't that four?
Right here is what I'm talking about, the first sentence of section one.
Oh, did I make a typo? Yeah, the development agreement expires in 2024. The end of the year, we're asking to let it expire in 2027.
Oh, okay.
To give us more time to negotiate and talk.
Right. Councilmember McLean.
So don't, don't get me wrong. While I'm negative on, this is super hard for me personally because I, this is where property rights, which are sacred, right? Kind of cross the line for the community, you know, because they own the property, right? But the deal was they bought the property with a standing development agreement, right? And then they came forward and said, well, we're going to build 1,100 houses, right?
And we said.
And we said, no, we have an agreement, right? So I think if they're back to, to negotiate in good faith, they are property owners. They have the property. They have a right to do what they, they can with the property. Right now, the agreement does provide benefit to both us and them, which is what an agreement should do. Without the agreement, they can build 1,100 units in there, right? It'll cost them a lot of money.
Good luck.
Yeah.
They'll sell it to somebody.
Okay.
They would chop it up into little pieces and build a bunch of low-end apartments, right?
Yeah. So I, you know, it's, it's a hard spot because you want, one, I want them to be financially successful. Two, I want, I want them to enjoy their property rights. But I also have to look around at the community and protect the community because that's my job, right? So where do we balance that? This is really hard. I think by saying no, 1,100, going from 6, 600 and something to 1,100 was, I, I believe, not appropriate in any sense of the imagination. No matter how nice it is, you're doubling what the city originally agreed and what you bought the property for. So that's, that's it.
Councilmember Davis. First of all, thank you.
Uh, first of all, thank you Councilman McLean for giving us a little bit more background for us newer, uh, members on the council. So I appreciate that. Um, understanding the high density with the growth plan in there is important too. Also, I'm looking at this from another angle too. Uh, we're working on peak four 10 project that's kind of supposedly bringing 800 new jobs. Um, and this will create residents.
You said that on the record, right? I'm just, I'll mark, mark that down.
So this, this create, uh, residents for people that are coming that keeps them in the city limits. So I just, you know, affordable housing in that area. So it is something to think about also. But I do agree with you that going from 600 to 1100 is, is excessive. That's, that's a large jump.
Big change.
Yeah, I think it was 1150, if I, if I remember correctly.
Almost double.
If you're gonna go, go big.
I like it.
I, I, I agree with you, Councilor McLean, is that this was an opportunity for both sides. Anytime you're negotiating, you're talking, you're like, hopefully we're coming out with something that's going to benefit both sides. That's really what we want to do is benefit the city side as much as we can. Obviously they want to benefit their side as much as they can. But being together and having those discussions, I think is the important part. And I think all, both sides have done a good job now, uh, of doing that. Hopefully something good for all sides. Any further discussion on this issue?
I think a negotiation is necessary. I think extending it is what we should be doing. And then giving staff that option to sit down with Midtown Properties and Terragon to figure that out and come back to us.
Councilor Baldwin.
Just want to double check. So we won the lawsuit, but we're still, they're still getting their 1100 or so houses. That, that's what you're saying.
Oh, we won the lawsuit on the interpretation of the development agreement.
Right.
So as long as the development agreement remains effective. It's 672.
Okay.
As soon as the development agreement expires, it just resurs, it reverts back to whatever the property is zoned, which is high density residential, which would allow for two, 20 units per net acre, which would equate to 1100 ish plus units.
Oh, yes.
So even though you won the lawsuit, that's on the development agreement, but that contract is only binding until December of this year. Once the contract expires, it's just whatever our zoning code says. So by voting for the extension, we keep the contract in place to allow us more time to negotiate a solution, an elegant solution that is a win-win for everybody.
Mr. Sullivan's still looking for some answer, head nods or something probably.
I don't hear anybody that's going to vote against it.
Okay, very good. So move forward.
We want to move this on the 23rd consent or regular council?
Full council.
Full council.
This is the biggest thing they ever had.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Big deal.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Uh, so no other discussion on that. We'll move on to our next discussion item. Madam Clerk.
This is discussion item only for AB 2475, Resolution R 2475, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, to adopt the East Pierce Interlocal Coalition for Emergency Management Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan 2024 to 2029.
Thank you. Thank you, council members and mayor for allowing me to join you this evening. Just for the record, my name is Ray Jean Creel. I am your emergency manager here in the city. Um, just for a little bit of background, the comprehensive emergency management plan is the only plan that the state actually requires for jurisdictions to have, um, to, to make sure that the city is aware and has assigned roles and responsibilities for when disasters happen. The last time that the city has formally adopted this plan, uh, was in 2000. And this is a plan that is required to be reviewed and read adopted every five years. So we're, we're a little behind on that. Um, however, um, a little over two years ago, as you, as most of you know, we joined the East Pierce Interlocal Coalition for Emergency Management, which puts us with City of Puyallup, City of Sumner, Ordin, Buckley, Carbonado and Wilkerson. And, uh, right about the same time, we began the process of developing an epic wide comprehensive emergency management plan or CEMP. It is now finished and we're very happy to have it done. Um, it has taken, uh, over two years, a lot of labor love. Um, the everybody in the city has been fantastic working with us. Um, so part of that requirement was to develop a plan. Uh, this was the first time we've done this epic wide. And so the base plan is, is, uh, generic enough that it covers the entire epic area. And then there's an annex for every jurisdiction that's a member of Epic. So Bonnie Lake, we have our own juris, we have our own annex for our jurisdiction. We actually changed our formatting, um, in this plan, different to any one that we've done before, to make it a lot easier for our, for our departments in the city to understand what they need to do. It used to be formatted in a way where we based it on emergency support functions. So transportation, communication, law enforcement, fire response. And so you had to go through every section and figure out, okay, I work in public services. What's my role here? What's my role here? What's my role here? Um, now it's just based by a department. And so as you look through the plan, you can actually say, okay, I'm in public services. Here are all my roles and responsibilities. So it's much easier for folks to read, digest, understand what they need to do in real time. Um, so the plan was completed at the end of 2023. It was due to the state for review. Um, they used to be, uh, regulatory where they had to actually approve our plans. That changed about eight years ago. So now we are just required to actually submit it to the state to receive feedback from them. So how we can do it better next time. Um, so we had that plan submitted to them by the end of 2023. We received their feedback in March, made all of our final edits, sent it back to the state, got the thumbs up. It's all formatted and it's all finished. So, uh, the plan was to take this to the Public Safety Committee meeting and ask for it to go to consent for, to approve for the mayor to sign the, the plan. So we can actually complete promulgation. Um, but we get to bring it here for the workshop this evening. So the request for this plan was to be able to take it to consent next week, so that we can authorize the mayor to sign it along with the mayors of the other six jurisdictions. Any questions?
Fantastic job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any budget items for this that need to be?
No ma'am. We just get to sign it and be really happy for the next four and a half years.
Awesome.
The, um, so I know I saw that, I guess I actually didn't even notice that there was a link there. I just read through it. Um, so that link that you have, the epic link that has the actual plan in it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes. And I will let you know, just for full transparency, um, the plan that was updated, uh, that was added to the site was, uh, prior to our change in mayor. So just for the record, the, the, the completed plan that will go through a signatory process has been updated to include Mayor Carter. So that change has been made. Once everyone has signed it, the full, the fully promulgated plan will be uploaded in place of that document.
Sorry.
Sorry. Um, when I was reading through this, one of the things I didn't quite understand in the background summary was the City of Puyallup, like I looked at that, where's the chart? Um, age 140? Yeah.
140.
Was that, yeah. There was like the costs and stuff like that. And I just got to keep going, going and going and going. No, that's, I feel like that's the court stuff. Oh, man. Um, so that was the biggest thing was like the question of, but for me was like, the cost, it, it looked like, like all the, the way it was broken out, it was almost like, like the, is there an overall cost for that? No?
No, uh, what you may be thinking, I have a later agenda item, um, which is our interlocal agreement that we just, we have to make an update to, um, which we do pay into annually for.
Okay.
And that's probably where you saw the cost at.
Okay. Yeah. And that was like, it was like something like, well, didn't have line numbers in there for some reason. That was why it was like, why does Puyallup not have numbers?
We can discuss this when I talk about the ILA.
Yes.
There is no budget component to this. This is really just our response plan for when we find ourselves in a large incident or disaster.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I believe so.
I agree.
Okay.
Agree consent.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, item F.
This is a discussion item only for AB 2479, Resolution R 2479, authorizing the Bonnie Lake Municipal Court Judicial Branch Administrator to sign interagency agreement. I 8825060 between Washington Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, and Bonnie Lake Municipal Court for reimbursement of costs related to therapeutic court between June 7th of 2024 and June 30th of 2025.
Judge, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Hmm.
Okay. Uh, so, um, this is a renewal of the, uh, grant, uh, that supports the funding of the community court for, uh, the Bonnie Lake Municipal Court. Uh, it's in the amount of $194,600. Uh, what it does is it funds the, uh, community court completely. Uh, no funding comes from the City of Bonnie Lake.
Any questions?
That was actually my only question on it was it was. Verifying. You guys. Right.
Fantastic.
Anybody else?
Oh, thank you. Any questions? Other questions? No?
And is this going, consent?
Yep.
There you go. Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate your support.
Do, thank you, Your Honor.
You.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, item G.
Item D?
G.
This is discussion item only for AB 2480, Resolution R 2480. It's a motion to continue the limited term FTE of the Community Court Case Manager, step 14 on the nonrepresented salary scheduled during the period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025.
Uh, so basically, uh, what this is, is, uh, we've had a community court, uh, case manager, uh, since October of 2023. And, uh, what I'm asking here is, uh, to be able to continue, uh, her employment. Uh, all of her salary is paid through the grant funding and she is, um, essential to the success of the community court. Um, everything that she does, um, how she works with all of the participants, uh, is what is contributing to the success of the community court. And so I'm asking for, uh, your permission to, uh, keep her on basically. And all of, all of her salary comes from the funding. So, uh, nothing comes from the City of Bonnie Lake money.
Thank you. Councilor Hubler.
I'm just to, to make sure. So her salary, like even like the cost of LNI.
Everything, benefits, everything.
Everything?
Yes. Any other questions?
Consent as well.
Wanting to put that on the consent agenda?
I, all right. Again, thank you very much for your support. Really truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have the item H.
Um, item G. H, next one, sorry. This is discussion item only for AB 2482, Resolution R 2482, authorizing the mayor to sign the Kroger settlement participation form.
Did you miss 81?
Yeah.
Mine's off.
Now you know why we don't do these things, you know?
It's a resolution.
Committees.
Authorizing the City of the Bonnie Lake to enter an reimbursement agreement with the Bonnie Lake Municipal Court's Community Court.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, what this is, uh, is, um, basically, uh, this is, we're asking for uh, permission for the City of Bonnie Lake to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Bonnie Lake, uh, Community Court. Um, and, and what this does is, uh, it acknowledges and it confirms all of the expenses uh, that are incurred by the community court, uh, and that is paid for, um, the grant funding. Uh, what happens is the, uh, City of Bonnie Lake basically, um, uh, fronts the, uh, payment of the expenses, uh, and then, uh, the, uh, Bonnie Lake Community Court, um, submits the A19s to the Administrative Office of the Courts, who then turns around and reimburses the city.
Questions from council on that? Councilor Davis.
Is there a possibility that the state doesn't, like they discontinue this program and then the city's stuck with the?
No, we have a, we have a contract with them.
Okay.
So they would be in breach of contract. And so then we'd have to get the, uh, city attorney on them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Consent?
Consent?
Yeah.
Very good.
And thank you all very much for your support. I appreciate all the work that you all do.
Good judge.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
One more.
Madam Clerk, our next item.
Now it is AB 2482, Resolution R 2482, authorizing the mayor to sign the Kroger settlement participation form.
Burke will tell us about that.
Great. Thank you. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. Um, I'm Deana Burke. I'm the Deputy City Attorney Prosecutor for the City of Bonnie Lake. Um, this would permit the mayor to sign the Kroger settlement participation form. The State Attorney General's Office has negotiated settlements with various, um, companies, pharmaceutical, uh, drug manufacturing companies that, um, had an impact on the opioid crisis that's facing our country and also the Bonnie Lake community. Uh, this is the fourth opioid settlement that Bonnie Lake would be participating in. If all eligible cities and counties join, um, which is what's happened in the past with the other settlements, um, Bonnie Lake would receive, um, 0.12% of the settlement agreement. Uh, the total amount is, um, of the large settlement is 23.75 million. Bonnie Lake, uh, um, after the, um, would be receiving about 28,000, but attorney fees might be deducted out of that. So it might end up being a little less than that. Um, payments are made over periodically, over a time period until the year 2038. Um, the city in the past, um, entered an ILA that, to agree to pool funds with other Pierce County cities. Um, just because while this, these dollar amounts might seem large, it's actually really hard to start up any sort of a program. So we're pooling money with other cities and the county. Um, the staff recommendation is to have the mayor sign it, um, so that the city may receive the funds. Um, and to put this on the consent agenda for July 23rd. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
See any questions? Consent?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I got one.
Oh.
So the funds, um, from this would also go into the ILA?
That, that's, that's correct, Councilmember Fullerton.
Kind of combine everything.
Hubler.
Come, Member Rock and Councilmember Davis, since you guys weren't here when we, um, first talked about the ILA. If you guys want to know more, um, Ms. Burke can help make sure you guys understand like what the ILA was and what we, and I mean, we can talk to you too, because we talked a lot about in finance committee. So it is.
Interlocal agreement.
Yeah. It's just to help, um, people that have addiction issues and, um, ways to do that. So.
Right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
Wait, wait, one more.
Oh, sorry. One more.
Too late.
I was almost gone. AB 2476.
Item J. Are we putting that on the consent agenda also?
You don't have. Yours is confusing.
Yeah.
139.
That's right. Okay.
This is discussion item only for AB 2476, Motion M 2476. It's a motion to approve the mayor to sign the amended East Pierce Interlocal Coalition Epic Interlocal Agreement for Emergency Management Services between the cities of Bonnie Lake, Puyallup, Buckley, Ordin and Sumner, and the towns of Carbonado and Wilkerson.
Okay. So thank you again for having me. I'll keep this short and sweet. Um, basically, we've, uh, we've all been together as part of the East Pierce Interlocal Coalition, um, for a couple of years now. Um, a couple of, uh, lessons learned along the way have just led us to making a couple of small changes. Um, the first one we're really pleased about is adding the town of South Prairie to this because they were the only town left in the east part of the county that had not joined. Um, so we are adding them to the agreement. Um, and the second one, the second change, um, allows for the City of Puyallup, since they act as the lead agency for the interlocal agreement. Um, if we were to have an incident up here and be unable to coordinate our response, uh, resources needed for response, it allows them to request or allocate resources for us if we need it. It's not a requirement, it's more of just a redundancy component. Um, and then you, this is where you saw the finance chart, there are no changes. The chart's just in here, it was not in here before. So the request was, um, to be able to send this to consent, to authorize the mayor to sign the updated I L A. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so what, in that chart, what does that, where it says N A for the City of Puyallup? What does all of that mean? Everybody else has distribution, costs, all that kind of stuff.
So this is part of, um, when the agreement was originally developed, the City of Puyallup is the lead agency for for Epic. So they, uh, they have hired staff to take over the planning. So like, um, Pat Donovan was here and gave a presentation to you all. He's our lead planner. Um, and then they have two other staff that they have had on, um, payroll as well. So each jurisdiction pays in a small amount to be a member of Epic, and those funds go towards having those staff on personnel to help us with those tasks. That was all part of what was negotiated in the creation of the I L A. So there isn't a cost necessarily for Puyallup because they're handling all of the work. They cover benefits and salaries and so forth, it's just not covered on the chart.
So but does that mean that we as a city and all the other cities that are added in, they're paying for that as well?
Yes, every jurisdiction that's on that list, every jurisdiction that's a member of Epic pays a small amount each year to be, uh, members of Epic, to receive services.
Doesn't that mean that we're paying part of that salary as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. That's what that's for. That's what, that's what those funds are for, we pay for Pat. Um, and then they have a public educator who does public education, East Pierce wide. Um, and up until this month, they had another gal who helped administratively. She just retired, so they'll be replacing her.
Yeah, I think maybe why this chart might be confusing and might be helpful in the future is if Puyallup showed maybe what their costs were, so we knew what the percentage was, that the other cities were paying and, you know, based off what that is. It's just, it says N A, and it looks like they don't pay when they actually are paying something. We just don't have that information there.
I can pass that along. Yeah, this is actually, this is the original chart that's been part of the agreement since the beginning. It just wasn't, uh, printed in the agreement, was just part of the negotiations.
Me personally, I would like to see what every city is paying. If if Puyallup has, you know, staff, and we're all contributing towards that staff, that means they're not funding that all on their own. So I want to know what's their percentage that they're actually adding in to that staff position and all the other costs, I guess.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
So before we ch, sign for the adding South Prairie and the change for Puyallup, you want to see that component from Puyallup?
I personally would, just, I want to make sure of, like, it is what, you know, I mean, I understand that, you know, you know this part, but I don't see it here.
Sure.
And I'm a numbers person, and that is like, it just says N A.
Understood.
So do we put this on?
I don't know.
Well, council?
Check out.
Versus a consent until, and hopefully, we can get the numbers next week at the council meeting, or?
I'm going to find out, I'm going to email the emergency manager from Puyallup this evening and see if it's possible to get those numbers from her finance department before then.
Do you know if they pay into this, like, because there's what, how many cities?
The host, do you?
Yeah, so, so we're all essentially just breaking it down by the the ten cities, or however many there are on here. Uh, so everybody's paying a fair portion, including Puyallup.
Oh.
They're the host.
We pay membership to the host.
There's administrative fees.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially, and their emergency manager, who's not even considered part of the staff that we fund, spends about three fourths of her time on Epic work. So that's not even represented here, but I will definitely email her and see if we can get an updated chart, if it's possible before next Tuesday.
And then what what would this do, though, getting this information and having it, like, slowed down? Like, do you need it by a certain period of time, or?
We're just hoping to have the the I L A is signed and finished by the end of the summer, so.
Okay.
Not a big deal, the C E M P was the rush.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. No, it's completely okay. Um, I understand being a numbers person, I wasn't with the city when they did the original negotiation, so I, it wasn't part of creating the chart, so I understand wanting to see that. I don't know how they'll give a numerical, um, you know, quantitative value for their emergency manager's time, so I'll see how that works out for them, how they tag it in their system. Yes, absolutely. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So, um, we get their manager and an educator, and we get to be part of the coalition for twenty five thousand dollars.
And a planner.
And a planner.
So their planner actually wrote our our C E M P. He did all the legwork. Um, their, uh, their assistant to their city manager actually did all of our formatting for the plan. Um, Pat also wrote our continuity of operations, continuity of government plan, and he's now leading our effort for, uh, the Epic Wide Recovery Plan. So we, we get a lot out of him.
Is twenty five thousand dollars a good deal for a planner, Jason?
Yes. A planner and educator and half of an emergency manager for twenty five thousand is a pretty good deal. Any other questions? Okay, so I will see what I can bring to the meeting for next week for discussion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate all your work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Coring to it.
Real? Okay. Now we are adjourned.
Yeah. Employee, how come we have an end date on that? It makes no sense, you know, you know, it's like an employee. Whatever it is. Why is there an end date on it?
Okay, so there's this agenda coming out about the plot cameras, or their discussion, I saw it.